Good evening. Welcome to the December 16th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please, everyone, silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Brock Heath, followed by the pledge of allegiance to Stan.
Father, we come to you here tonight going into the season of when a lot of change, a lot of great things are going to be happening in all of our lives. God, we ask for blessings and favors in all areas of our life. God, we come to you at this time also when we refocus back on you, your son and his birth. God, there's a lot of noise, a lot of chaos, a lot of different things that are going on in life and out in the world. God, help us to silence that. Help us to refocus on what actually matters this season, family and you, God. Thank you for the people that are out there protecting us, especially overseas. Fighting enemies, God, give them victory over the enemies. God, thank you for watching over people here, firefighters and police that are fighting their own battles here as well. We pray all these things in your name and in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Oda? Mr. Twist?
Love, move to excuse Mrs. Oda. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to excuse Mrs. Oda. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Absolutely.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda is excused.
Move to excuse Mr. Twist. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to excuse Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Absolutely.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist is excused.
Tonight, we are privileged to have with us Mr. Dan Foley, Director of the Great Miami Riverway, Miami Conservancy District, with us this evening to make a presentation. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Well, good evening. Welcome to winter, everyone. I'm Dan Foley and I'm here, I'm the Director of the Great Miami Riverway, of which Troy has been such a big proponent, really, ever since we started, before we started it. And I just want to say thanks to the entire City Council, to the city, to Pat Titterington, to Stan, our good friend Stan Kegley, and Aubrey, and everybody at the city who's helped really, really lift this asset that we have for this 99 miles of Great Miami Riverway. Troy was an early supporter of this initiative. Without your support, we really wouldn't be where we are today. And tonight, obviously, marks the last council meeting for our good friend Mayor Beamish and also for Tom Kendall, City Council member. And I just asked Stan if I could just come and present something to both Tom and Mayor Beamish. I just wanted, so Mayor Beamish began a career after his career in education, representing the citizens of Troy as the mayor, and he saw a lot of potential in riverfront development, like many of us do and have. He was an early supporter of a study that we did through the Army Corps of Engineers to kind of bring these communities, try to figure out how to leverage all the assets that the communities from Sidney all the way down to Hamilton have with the riverfront, and Tom is certainly the same. He championed the Treasure Island Park Initiative, and we just want to thank him for his role on our board for the last two years. And likewise, with Councilmember Tom Kendall, with a decades-long career in international business, Tom supported our organization, just like the mayor did, just like many people here did when we were starting, to use the gift of the river as a regional tourism destination and also lift up economic development. And I understand through Stan that his support was not only through his time, but financially as well, and that he and his family organized events at Treasure Island Park, which really served as a catalyst for the summer concert series that's happened here. I just want to say that the work, sometimes we probably take where we live for granted, we take the river for granted because it's pretty much always been there. But I just want to point out that one of the things that we're really going to try to focus on in the next, you know, two, three, four, or five years, is just to highlight for folks how much investment has happened along this 99-mile corridor. You look at Troy's downtown master plan, the new housing that I've been reading about here, the Treasure Island Initiative, Kettering Hospitals, $60 million investment downtown. Monka County Fairgrounds in Dayton is going to have a 70, almost $70 million investment on the river. There's going to be a new $144 million used sports facility in Hamilton. Middletown River Center is about $1 million in investment. And just about a month and a half ago, Ohio Magazine named the Great Miami River Trail the best recreation trail in the state of Ohio. So for all of these reasons, and the last thing is the GOBAs come to Troy, the bike rides come to Troy. So for all of these reasons, I just, I really appreciate what the mayor and Councilmember Kendall have done. You might know, I served as an elected official in Monka County for a little over 18 years, so I'm mindful that both of them, just like everybody around this table, has to sacrifice your time, you have to sacrifice time with your family, and some things that you might want to do personally to kind of lift up the things that we all care about. So with that, I just want to say thanks to Tom and to Mayor Beamish. And I just have a plaque on behalf of all the members of the Great Miami Riverway that I'd like to present to both of you, and congratulations and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on to the summary of minutes and ask Mrs. Knight to please read the summary of the minutes of the December 2nd, 2019, meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, December 2, 2019. A presentation was made to the Quarterly Reward winner of the Rumpke Recycling Contest. Committee reports, Finance Committee recommended approval of the 2020 budget, including the financial funding for Troy Development Council, Troy Main Street, and the Troy Recreation Association. Law and Ordinance Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing the law director to delegate assistant law directors and also to authorize an agreement with the law director's firm. Streets and sidewalks committee reported further, asking that ordinance number 041 be further amended to include a provision that no person shall dump, discharge, sweep, or otherwise deposit grass, yard, or lawn clippings into any public street, and to also remove the criminal penalty violation. Resolution number R41, I'm sorry, R54, 2019, approving funding to Troy Main Street, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R55, 2019, authorizing funding for Troy Recreation Association, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R56, 2019, funding to Troy Development Council, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R57, 2019, authorizing legal services, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 041, 2019, regarding sidewalks was given second reading, amended, the amended ordinance was given second reading. Ordinance number 042, 2019, appropriating funds for 2020, which is the budget approval, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 043, 2019, reappropriation for 2019 was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:59 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We have just one committee report this evening. It's from the Economic and Development Committee. In the absence of Chairman Twist, Mr. Kendall, would you please provide that report?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on December 13th to consider an annexation petition filed on behalf of Patricia A. Harshbarger, trustee, and Linda F. Rocco for property owned on McCague Road and on State Route 718. Based on the state law provisions for an expedited type-two annexation, there is a very short timeline for council to consider legislating action. As discussed in the detailed report, there are probably procedural defects within the petition that the county may consider and correct. However, the requirement of the city is to provide standard statements related to city services, buffering requirements, if there would be incompatible zoning, and either consent or object to the annexation. As discussed with the Director of Law, it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared for the December 16th meeting to provide for the statement of services and buffering requirements required by state law related to the Harshbarger-Rocco annexation of a total of 43.5915 acres, more or less, from Concord Township. But that consent legislation be considered at the January 6th meeting, provided the county accepts the filing of the annexation petition. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by myself, Mr. Schwizer, and Mr. Twist as chairman.
Are there any questions from council members? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Seeing then, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R58, 2019.
Resolution number R58, 2019, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 43.5915 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is one piece of legislation for the Harshbarger-Rocco annexation, first reading.
Are there any questions from council members?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R59, 2019.
Resolution number R59, 2019, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 43.5915 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation for the Harshbarger-Rocco annexation read in the committee report tonight.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read ordinance 041, 2019.
Ordinance number 041, 2019, an amended ordinance amending section 521.06 of the codified ordinances of the city of Troy, Ohio, regarding duty to keep sidewalks in repair, third reading. Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
This is in the third reading.
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
No.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there's not.
Mayor Beamish, do you have comments this evening?
Yes. Tonight, as we already know, four of us will be leaving our positions after this meeting. We still have a little time, but this is our last meeting. I want to thank Brock and Tom, President Baker, for all the service they have given. If you've added up the number of years of the four that are leaving their positions, that totals over 65 years of elected public service to this community. 65 years of elected. And during that time, I say this to the whole council and other councils that came before, they have taken the risk necessary to run for public office. They've been elected by the electorate for that office. They've taken the necessary risk and the due diligence. Not that we've always agreed on everything, but we've, I will 100% stand by and say, everybody has done their due diligence trying to make the best decisions for this community. And a lot of people don't realize that every one of us around this dais, any vote that we take, any action we take, it affects all of us, just like every other resident in this community. And for that, I say, thank you for moving our city forward. During my 26 years of elected public service, I've seen this council and administration do some great things. We heard some things already today from Dan Foley, regionally as well as locally, to move this city forward. And we are held in high regard. We don't have to look too much farther than to say we were one of America's best communities not many years ago. We've been Ohio's best hometown, not once, but twice, which is pretty unprecedented. So we've done some things, and I thank you all for the much, the hard work and the talent that you bring to this city. And for all of our new council members and mayor coming into their offices, I want to wish you the very best as you continue to take this city and move it forward for all of us who really love this community. So I just needed to say that, and it's tough to say goodbye, but that's what we're doing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several things, some of them minutia, I guess. Given that we don't meet until after the New Year's, just want to make sure everyone knows that Christmas Day and New Year's Day are the two days that we will be on an adjusted schedule for trash and recycling. So everything will be adjusted one day, if you would normally be picked up on Wednesday the 25th or Wednesday the 1st. Leaf collection is still in round two, but it's going very well. We do plan on round three, just to clean up any extra piles, I guess, of leaves. We anticipate, now that the weather is catching up to us, that we would start round three on January 6th, thereabouts, weather permitting. Do want to, given the weather that we've had, did want to give you a little update on where we're at year-to-date, salt and plowing and expenses compared to last year. Last year, we had, as of today, five events. We had used 50 tons of salt and our costs with fuel, labor, overtime, salt and brine, just about $4,800. This year, we've had three events. We've had used 230 tons of salt, and our expenses year-to-date are $21,320. So we'll continue to monitor that. Hopefully, things will calm down. These three events are just, they just happened the way they happened. And so last night, the crew was out for about four hours and salted everything. So I think this morning, once everyone started driving, especially on the local streets, things, the roads got black fairly quickly. So that's that. Finally, I would like to echo Mayor Beamish, like to thank Mayor Beamish, Marty, Tom, and Brock for your service, for your support and your commitment, and your dedication for the many years that you've put in. 65 years, I think, is what Mayor Beamish said. Having done this, sit in one of these seats anyway for over 20 years, I know it's fairly easy to question and to second-guess, but it's a lot more difficult and it's very, it takes a lot of dedication to try to be part of the solution because it's not a popularity contest. I want to thank you for what you've done, appreciate your support again, and I wish you well. I hope you will continue to consider being involved, continuing to be involved as a volunteer. We are constantly in need of volunteers, and someone, you who have the kind of experience that you do, could lend very positive feedback to what we do as we move forward. So thank you, and to everyone, everyone else and you as well, happy holidays. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggi.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing to add to that.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to commend the outgoing officials as well. I've worked with all of you on various issues, and, you know, it's very obvious to me that you love Troy, and you love your community, you love your neighbors, and that it was apparent that you were always doing things for the right reason. And, you know, I'm sure I'll see everybody around, but I'll certainly miss working with you as well.
Thank you. Since this is my last meeting, I wanted to take a couple minutes to thank all the council members that I've worked with throughout the years for the cooperation that we've received. Nothing in the city has ever been accomplished by one person working in a vacuum, and I thank the city staff in all departments and all the various committees for their hard work. We've accomplished much over the last 20 years through sharing ideas and efforts. The support of various foundations and nonprofits have enhanced those efforts. When I began on council in 2000, the city did not do a newsletter nor broadcast council meetings. Facebook wasn't even an option. I'm hopeful that the staff, bringing on a new communications specialist, will continue to expand and move those efforts in a positive direction. Paul G. Duke Park didn't exist 20 years ago, and through private support from Mr. and Mrs. Tom and Pat Robinson, that became a reality. And I would encourage the continuing council members and new council members to continue to enhance all of our beautiful parks. The first tax increment financing in Troy allowed an area of development, including Story Point, Outback Steakhouse, Troy Town Apartments, Frickers, Staples, and so on. And we are now looking towards the possibility of another TIF in our downtown area. Combined efforts also made possible a new fire station two, Troy Aquatic Park, Hobart Arena renovations, Treasure Island, redevelopment of the ITW Hobart property as the new Kettering Health Network, Troy Hospital, golf course clubhouse, Shoreline Restaurant, and much more. Our infrastructure has been enhanced to include sidewalk improvement program, McCague Road improvements, Adams Street Bridge, State Route 55, South Dorset improvements, sidewalk on the south side of West Main Street over I-75, beginning of and continuing the operation Cloverleaf through the efforts of Mr. Ted Mercer and the Mercer Group and other area lawn care companies. North Market Street improvements, new Mulberry Street parking lots, emphasis and creation on the Complete Streets Plan, emphasis of the Riverfront Corridor and development along Riverfront, emphasis on bicycling and being a bike-friendly community, development and updating of the Water Master Plan and the Capital Improvement Plan, and water supply agreements with Miami County and West Milton. And council continues to support industrial, commercial, and residential sectors, as well as providing quality life activities. We worked through the addition of two new wards and two new positions on council in the city in 2014 as a result of increasing population. I would challenge council to continue to work to preserve Troy's historical heritage in areas and be mindful of budgeting and maintenance of the infrastructure and existing properties as the city continues to expand. Always keep your constituents in mind as you move forward into the next decade, and never stop learning. And finally, a big thank you to the voters who made all of this possible. It's been a great experience for me. Thank you. And now, are there any comments from council members this evening? Mr. Dick, we'll start with you, Tom. Mr. Kendall?
Okay. I'm bored and raised here. I love this community. I always have, and I hope to see it continue to grow. You know, just because I'm leaving the office doesn't mean that I still don't care, because I do. And I want to see Troy continue to be a success. But it's time that I move on, really go into retirement mode, be with my family. You know, my wife and I have a lot to do. I mean, a lot of things we want to do, so. And with five grandkids getting more involved in clubs and athletics and all, it's taking a lot of time. And I guess I will, I'll have to end with one thing that my oldest granddaughter said. She said, "Grandpa, now you can spend time with us." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Heath?
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely want to say thank you for this experience. It's been awesome. I think back in 2012 or '13, the mayor came to me, and I didn't really even know what was going on or what this was about. And he said, "Hey, there's a new ward coming. You live in it. You've been involved, and I like you, so you want to go for this thing?" And I said, "Yeah, sure. I don't really know what they do," or anything like that. So I thought it was kind of like a chamber board-type thing, and then I got involved and found out everything that was supposed to happen for it to happen. And I was like, "Hey, this is a real thing. This is like, it's cool." I had to go ask my boss at the bank to get permission to run this whole thing. So I was, I think, 32 when that happened, and I'm almost 40 now, so I pretty much spent my whole 30s up here with you guys, so it's been awesome. I was looking back through pictures when I first started doing this. I had a lot more hair. I don't know if that's like tied to this or what. Tom, you feel me? Yeah. Sorry, the first head I saw is number 10. But yeah, definitely learned a lot, matured a lot up through this. It's been really fun and a cool experience. I got to do all kinds of backseat tours and different things and really help people out and do things that I didn't ever think that I would be able to do in this role. I want to give kudos to Marty and Sue because you two ladies have put up with me and tried to find me when I was out of state and all these crazy things, so I appreciate all of that that you guys did. Had a blast with this. The 65 years that are going away. The 65 years that are going away, I had like six of them, so they're like, they all, they did all the work, it wasn't me. So, but it was awesome to be part of this kind of outgoing class. I feel like it's appropriate that Mayor, you brought me in and you and I get to ride off into the sunset here together with these guys. It's, it's been awesome. So there's, I got to see barbecue and speak one time and he said, he was going to a speaking event or something and he, he heard a story about a farmer that was putting his mule in the Kentucky Derby, right? And his buddies were saying that, "You're gonna, your mule's gonna get killed up there." And he said, "Yeah, but it's gonna be in some mighty fine company." So that's the way that I've always felt of being here with you guys and ladies, being involved with the staff and everything. It's like, I feel like I'm that mule, but I'm in this awesome mighty fine company up here. So it's been an honor to come and hang out and serve with you all. And maybe one of these days in like 20 or 30 years when I retire, I'll come back and play again, but. So it's been awesome. Oh, last thing, Lester, man, you've made this thing really entertaining. So when I first started, you used to wear these rainbow suspenders. You gotta bring those back, man. That was.
Well, God, I want that map.
It's been waiting years to ask you about this thing. I think I gotta end it on that. So anyway, appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Thanks to the six ward, you guys, six ward rocks. They're awesome over there. Amazing human beings. And so, Jeff, man, congrats on getting over there and serving those people well. I know you will. There's some awesome people over there, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on council?
Madam President, obviously, kudos to everyone. I would like to state, because I don't think anyone said it yet, but on the 29th, from 1:00 to 3:30, there will be a reception to honor outgoing Mayor Beamish at the Hayner Cultural Center. So I think there's invites. I saw Robin posted some stuff on Facebook, but we should extend that invitation and I'm sure the mayor would like to see everybody. The second thing I wanted to say, obviously, you know, it is in good company. I thought Brock stated all that really well. But changing the subject a little bit, I just want to compliment, whether it's Troy Main Street or the merchants, but our downtown windowscape is phenomenal. And if no one's had an opportunity to walk by through downtown, I would encourage everyone to do it. I'm not sure if it's a competition, but we have everything from a Christmas story to probably one of the most beautiful etchings or drawings I've ever seen in front of pure bread. So check out definitely downtown over the holiday season, since we won't be back till after the holiday season. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Lutz.
I have it on good authority that the mayor-elect is watching this and where, the time where she is is 8:30 tomorrow morning. So if I can be quickly excused for just one moment. The mayor-elect, I know she's watching, had asked us to present this gift to you in honor of your last meeting as our council president.
Thank you very much. I was supposed to open.
I think that I leave that up to your discretion.
I think I'll wait until after this.
There we go. And I will also invite all council members, elected officials, and administrative staff. I know Sue has worked hard to put together some snacks and some desserts for a small reception, so, so please come for a few minutes after the meeting.
Marty, that's a big picture of Patrick's face you can put on your wall.
I will open it in a few minutes after I'll skip to tears.
It's a picture of Patrick, but not his face.
With that, is there any other comments? Is there any comments from city staff? Any members of city staff have any comments? Any members of the audience have any comments this evening?
Yeah.
If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name's Richard Pierce. I live at 2006 Troy Urbana. And I do want to say, from our family to you guys, we really do appreciate the efforts you guys put forward to serve our community. It is a job that we, we really do appreciate. It's a lot of work and as a business guy and somebody who's busy, I know you guys are busy, we just appreciate all you guys do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you can see, my stride's getting slower, but we made it through another year. And I'll say, Mr. Kendall, you've been dealt some bad cards, but if there's anything I can do to help you, you know my address. Mayor Beamish, my daddy always said, "If you can't say anything nice about anybody, don't say anything." So all I'm gonna say to you is have a good retirement and good health. And Brock, basically the same thing to you. And my daddy always also said, "The truth always hurts." And evidently, the last meeting must have hurt somebody because I really got plastered up here. But with that being said, I'm gonna say Merry Christmas, not a prosperous New Year, because that'd be out of my pocket, but a good year, New Year.
Jim Thompson, 201 Nottingham Hill. I've got a little story I'm gonna tell in a minute, but I need to address Patrick because he's got the memory here. I think probably in the last six or eight months, maybe, I think I read where at one of the meetings, he must have had someone approach council and ask about a leash law here in the city. And the only thing I remember of it, I don't know whether they are pro, con, I don't, I don't, there wasn't the details, I don't believe. The only thing I do remember was that they were told that we don't have a leash law here as far as we want to take your dog in a park, the dog can run. Is that correct? I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure.
That's correct. We do not have a leash law. We have a, an under-control law. Whether that involves a leash or not, the, the owner must demonstrate that the animal is under control.
I don't know, now, I know the mayor's been around here a long time. Was there ever a time years ago that we did have a leash law in this town? I mean, I always, always, in my, I always felt there was. I was always under that assumption. And so I was shocked when this was brought up.
I, I can probably add something to it. Generally, it's, as Patrick mentioned, it's something to, fair to confine or to keep a dog under control. And I think sometimes people use those, and that's a state ordinance as well, and the, the animal shelter enforces that as well as, but oftentimes, I, I think the leash law, and that's sort of used interchangeably, but there is no requirement that a, a dog has to be on a leash so long as it's under control of its owner or harbinger.
What's prompted me up here actually is it's too full. I, I do a lot of walking. I retire, my wife walks with me some. We hit all the parks and so forth and the major trails. And Duke Park, because of the proximity where we live, I go there, you know, regular. And a lot of the folks over there do have dogs, the dogs are ranging out 50, 100 yards in front of them. And you have a dog approach you and so you're always on your guard to kind of watch him because you, I'm not trusting anybody's dog. I've never had an issue over there. However, a week ago Friday, I went from where I live over by Duke and took a walk. My goal was to hit Treasure Island and come back. It'd been about a four-mile walk. I get to Treasure and I walk out on the island and I'm partway through that when you hear this guttural growl and it, it erupts into a full attack bark. You spin and I have a dog at 20 yards bearing down on me. Now, I've, I've had numerous dogs come at me and if you stand your ground normally and you, you go at them, you can run them off. This dog came barreling in on me, has a bright orange collar, looks like a shock collar because there's, there's a square lump embedded on the collar. So I did everything I could as far as I go at the dog, I yell, I'm throwing my arms up in the air, I'm approaching him. I got him stopped from here to Mr. Heath. The animal spins and starts to come back again. So right away, I'm thinking, this is gonna be a tougher animal, and I'm, I'm nervous. But I keep the dog at bay. Maybe 20 seconds of this went on and I'm raging at this animal, when the second dog bears in on me bigger and it's, it's coming in full tilt. Same thing, orange collar, shock collar. This one, I could tell from his demeanor, I thought, I'm gonna, I'm definitely going to the hospital if, if I'm lucky, because this dog, I don't think I can stop. But I had no choice. I don't have any other weapon, so I go at this dog the same way. This dog, I get stopped with, and I could hit him with a baseball bat, that's how close he was. The third dog comes in and now I don't know, I don't know how to put this feeling inside your heart. I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a coward, I'm not the bravest man in the world, but I'm telling you, when that third dog showed up, I honest to God thought, I'm dead. It's just, I'm either dead or I'm gonna be mauled, because I can't fight three dogs. Because as I push one dog off, the next one would become it. And this went on for several seconds, what seemed like eternity might have been in a minute and a half. I ended up getting lucky and grabbing, I found a sycamore branch. And between that and going at him, I started pushing him away. And as we went across the island, I could see a person standing about 20 yards down the sidewalk, on the sidewalk that goes from the parking lot to the bridge over to Treasure. And at first, I didn't know if it was an observer, someone had heard me because I was ranting and raving with these animals. And the dogs had started, one of them got over the bridge and the other two were now following, and I'm still raging at them and going, I don't want to push them away. The dog first dog runs up towards that person and this person didn't back off and they saw what was going on. Dog ran right to it. It was the owner. Because I screamed, I said, "Are these your animals?" Well, he's standing there, looking at me, and we're not more than 70 yards apart, and he doesn't respond. So then I, I yelled the next thing in my mind, because this is what my heart said. I told him, "If I had a gun, I'd have killed all three of them, and I would. If I had a concealed carry, I'd have shot every damn dog." He'd never said the first word. And he finally, he just headed to the, to the parking lot, the dogs jumped in the van. By the time I got to, to the parking lot where I was gonna try to get his license number, they were gone. He was there this past Friday again. All I'm gonna try to convey, and I know a lot of you are leaving, and I'm hoping this message goes through to the next, back six, seven months ago, when I read that in the paper, my wife and I were walking at Duke and we were talking about, and I said, "One of these days," I said, "Someone in this town is gonna get severely hurt." Because I've watched too many dogs race up on people. And I didn't know I was gonna be the one that was gonna be challenged on it. And all I'm gonna ask you to, to take with you on this is try to visualize tonight after you leave here. I don't know if you all have small grandchildren or whatever, but visualize someone out there like I see all the time, some young woman, 30 years old, and she's got a four-year-old with her and pushing a stroller. If those dogs would have attacked that woman on Treasure Island or some of the seniors that I see out there, I'm gonna tell you, sure as God made little green apples, he'd have had somebody that was dead. Because if that first dog would have got me down, the other two would have ripped me to hell. And I've changed what I'm doing now. I carry, I carry a number nine golf club with me and I will forever. And I'm, I'm not gonna make no bones about it, I ever am approached by that vicious of an animal, I'm gonna kill it. So if you don't want it on your conscience, some little four-year-old gets her throat ripped off because of this, you're gonna piss off a few people in this town because they can't go to Duke and have their dog range at 50 yards away. You've got a nice enclosure out places like that where people can take their dogs and they can run. If they have no business, these people, you talk about being under control, I still don't know if the dog started to back off on me because of the collars. I still question where this clown finally started zing him a little bit, and that's the reason they backed off. Because I honestly didn't think I was gonna make it out of there. So that's my story. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, we have some presentations this evening. I was gonna do it down in front, but I don't have a microphone down there, and so I think I'll do it from here. And Lauren, if you need anything later, we'll be here for a little bit, so.
You'll just have to stay for a minute backwards.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Heath. Presentation here. In grateful appreciation for your dedicated public service to the city of Troy and to the citizens of this community, from January 1st, 2014 to December 31st, 2019, as sixth ward council member, we have a plaque to present to you tonight. Also take your name tag with you. I would hand it to you if that is.
Parting gifts.
Parting gifts. Mr. Kendall, in grateful appreciation of your dedicated public service to the city of Troy, Ohio, and the citizens of this community, from September 6th, 2005 to December 31st, 2019, as first ward council member, we appreciate your service. And last, and certainly not least, presented to Mayor Michael Albeamish in grateful appreciation of your dedicated public service to the city of Troy, Ohio, and the citizens of this community, as a Troy City Council member at large from January 1st, 1994 to December 31st, 2003, and as mayor from January 1st, 2004 to December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Now it's my turn. President Baker, Martha Hay Baker, in grateful appreciation for your many years, 20 years if I figure this out right, dedicated public service to all the citizens in Troy, Ohio, as Troy City Council, from second ward councilwoman with, from January 1st of 2000 to December 31st of 2007, and then president of Troy City Council from January 1 of 2008 to December 31st of 2019, if I figure that right, as 12 years as president of the legislative branch of Troy City Council. I gratefully give you this and I'm proud to work together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now the belated. You may not have noticed, that gavel is not necessarily the gavel that you've hit for those 12 years. This is the gavel. So I would like to present this gavel to you so you can close the meeting tonight with your own personal gavel. That's yours.
Thank you. And with that, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peace-filled Christmas season and a very happy New Year. Our meeting is adjourned. And as Bill mentioned, there are, I guess, refreshment.